Remember the VISA these pens were always like the coolest pens.
Does it show?
And I could say like they was, they were like the best pens to use. So we would always try to steal them.
Think we are good.
Cool, okay.
All right, sorry for that technical difficulty. I'd like to call this, um, special city council meeting committee of the whole to order at, uh, seven twelve. Uh, see ministry, please call the roll.
Haddaway?
Present.
Schultz?
Present.
Lovely?
Here.
Carncross?
Here.
Lancaster?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Perkins?
Present.
And Luna?
All right, thank you. Um, there is no, uh, agenda item for public comment on here, so, uh, but I think we need to have public comment. So is there anyone that wishes to, uh, speak to city council about any item that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, okay, we'll move on item three, which is city council realignment and strategic vision task assignments. At the last city council meeting, uh, we brought a proposal to kind of adjust the committee structure a little bit to, uh, provide, um, better governance over those various areas of focus. You've had an opportunity to review these, we'd like to have your input on, uh, what you would like to see, if this is acceptable, or if you have some, um, recommendations to change.
Yeah.
Do we need to change the document? Um, community development says public properties, um, do we need to put in parentheses after that? Not park land, not designated parks?
That's a fair thing, cause there is a differentiation between non-park public property and park public property. So I think that makes sense.
Cause Parks and Rec is gonna deal with all their property.
Indeed, yes.
Would this just, would this be for both like in the event of like an acquisition? Or selling, or use thereof? I guess I'm just wondering.
I, I think that would be wholly appropriate, yes, because you're looking at either, um, uh, dispositioning current public property or, um, looking at acquiring public property. Uh, I think it would make it appropriate to have that into, uh, this committee.
Okay. Now, if it's something, let's say we're in a situation that it's, I guess I just wanna make sure that it might be splitting hairs. I don't wanna have a situation where, I guess it would, is there a position, is a, is there a point where something to do with public properties because of the buying and selling and all that would, that would involve the finance end of it?
Well, there certainly would be finance, um, repercussions to that, uh, but I think, um, if it's gonna require a budget amendment, then that would need to go to the finance group, yes.
Okay. I, just so that there's clarification, cause the public properties is kind of a general term.
No, I think it's a fair question.
Same page of depending on the situation of what this is in relation to the finance end of it, that it goes to the correct committee.
So it would seem like to me that-
In the past, that has gone to admin, is for disposition of, of property.
And let's talk about that, so I feel like, um, you know, this, this is where there's that ambiguity of which, which, uh, committee should it start in? What do you think? What does the council think? Should it start in, uh, community development, or should it start in what we would call finance?
I think you're gonna have to do that on a case-by-case basis, based on what the topic is and how, I think all of these committees outside of finance are in one way or another going to have to go to finance at some point in addition to that committee, depending on, you know, I, I don't think you can really pinpoint now when those circumstances are gonna be.
I, I could foresee, you know, um, uh, a situation where it starts out in the community development committee to even consider moving forward with the project, and if the community development committee says, yeah, we think we should, that it then get sent to finance to consider, will you do a budget amendment to make that happen? But maybe all the real heavy lifting starts in the community, uh, development, and then it goes to finance to determine, can we pay for it? Uh, what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, we haven't done that up till now.
No, we haven't.
I mean, we haven't, I mean, like with parks, like with selling the truck, I mean, that went from parks to, and doing the whole deal, that went from parks to the council. So.
Well, we're, we're here to discuss-
I don't think we wanna set up a, set up a system that creates, you know, too much bureaucracy.
I agree with that, so, you know.
My thought would be that, and, and I guess this would work for community development, the property, but also it'd be important for infrastructure, because infrastructure routinely is spending money, and a lot of it is not necessarily, uh, pre-budgeted or pre-planned, cause stuff comes up. It makes sense to me that if there's a, a proposed situation, be it like an acquisition, whatever, if the budget has already been established, and it's just the directive of using already budgeted funds, and it's not going to require a budget amendment, or any kind of shifting of anything else, I'm comfortable with whatever committee handling it. If there's a situation where funds need to be moved from another account, or a budget amendment, or, um, something like that, where it's going to impact another area, uh, of the budget, then I, once the, the, the idea or the plan is figured out, then it makes sense to me to send it to admin, just to go over the numbers and make sure that they're comfortable with the, with the finance end of it.
So the Park Truck is a good example, because that actually was, um, that was a result of the Park Money Market Fund, which is a capital improvement fund that falls outside the budget, we don't budget for that, right?
Right.
Um, so that would technically be okay being handled by the Park Committee, remembering that the final decision-making is at the city council, where everybody's involved. So, so that's kind of an example of that, where it's outside the budget, where I think Parks could handle that fine, and then if there was any issues, it could be addressed at council as well.
Yeah, and recognizing all these committees, any, any things, any actions taken out of the committees, our recommendation to the full city council, where you all get to make that decision, yea or nay, whether you want to do the proposal, or you kick it back to committee, cause, uh, and a perfect example is the chicken, um, uh, ordinance got sent back and forth a few times, because the full city council wasn't, um, satisfied with the way it was. And so it went back to committee to address those issues. So, I, you know, the, the idea here is just to try and create a system of committees that help us to address all the issues that come up in, within the, uh, community, uh, in a more efficient way, but give each committee at least the, um, uh, the ability to make recommendations to the full city council concerning that topic that they oversee.
It's, to me, it's, I, I, I don't, I, I just think it should remain the admin committee. Um, you know, just because, if you, when we get farther into this, and we get into the, you know, these assignments and so on, you know, we basically say in here, not directly, but indirectly, that everything that is EEG, you know, is part of the, um, finance committee. That don't make sense, it's admin. And, and the, the real finance responsibility here is one, I heard people talking about Dixon earlier, that is one, to make sure that the monthly reports are, are accurate, or if there's any questions in the, in the monthly financial reports. That is a direct responsibility of admin and, or the finance, either one.
Uh huh.
Um, and then any pre-budget work, you know, I think we've done that in the past, where the, that committee has done some preliminary work before the budget is presented to the city council. Everything else, though, is done by the city council, I mean, we do budgets by the city council.
Right, yeah.
And, and the projects come from the committees.
Yeah.
So to me, we should, you know, when we get farther down in here, like I say, there's some things that were assigned possibly, I know this is tentative.
Yes.
Um, to the mayor and the city administration, but it seems to me like the oversight of these things that are EEG should go to admin.
Um. And those are, those are, those are fair statements, uh, Charlie?
Um, you know, so I, again, it's, and it's not, it's, it's just to say, what is this committee? And it, to me, it's more, it's an admin committee. That doesn't mean it oversees any of the other committees, but we can make that clear, that, uh, those other committees are independent of admin for whatever they do in, in their area.
Right. But, yeah, I mean, it just, it looks like, it's like, okay, so you just do finance, which, as I looked back through the last year and a half of agendas for, for admin, and the things that we did deal with, it's like, okay, well, then we do the audit. Um, we do that meeting, um, we do the, we do the, the, um, uh, disposition of, um, of assets, you know.
Well, that's the stuff that's not in other committees.
Right, exactly, but it's like, it's like, okay, so that's really not, that's really not anything, and-
So, so maybe then, you know, the answer is that it remains the administration committee, but it, um, cause, and to a degree, the administration committee was kind of a catch-all committee for things that weren't clearly defined, that would fall under the other committees, like, so this is clearly a Parks issue, it should go to Parks, uh, this is clearly an infrastructure issue, it should go, or a road issue, or a sidewalk, go to transportation.
But like with the, with the, um, like with the, the budget and stuff for the, um, the sewage, or the water system, you know, we changed the, the billing, we changed, you know, the, the fees and whatnot there, and, you know, and in some ways, that's a financial thing, in other ways, that's an infrastructure thing, so what do you do with that?
That's where there is some ambiguity in various issues, so the answer is-
You're not getting rid of the ambiguity.
Where, where do we put it? Where do you wanna put it?
That's where I think, like, I, I don't have any problem at all, really, with the assignments, the way that they're categorized here. Uh, they make a lot of sense to me. The, the only thing that, that really, from my perspective, would just need to be clarified, and that's kinda doing that now, is if there's something that one of the other committees is going to do, and it's gonna impact the budget, or, or a significant change in the budget, for me, it would make sense to figure out what you wanna do, like, we're gonna, for example, we're gonna change how we're gonna do the, the, like, when we did the, the shifting of the water tower, uh, painting and repair and all that, that program, it would make sense to go to infrastructure, to figure out the details of those agreements, and what's going on, and what's being presented. And then for the financial end of it, if it's gonna impact the city budget, then it would make sense for admin to take a second look at it that month.
That's exactly what we're trying to avoid, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
That's exactly what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, we don't wanna have it going from committee to committee, and then the council, you wanna have it committee, council.
So, I, I think the answer then is, we just need to clearly define, as best as we can, what topics go to which committees, and then whatever committee takes up the topic, it goes to the council for final decisions. Because council overall is gonna make any decision on budget, budget amendments, um, acquisition of land, or disposition of land, or anything, is all gonna be done by the full council. So it really, and, and from that perspective, if there's ambiguity, that it could be in one committee or another committee, both committees have the same amount of, of ability to make recommendations to the full city council. So to your point, it really doesn't make sense to go committee to committee, and then the council. It, what we need to delineate is, which committee do the things start in?
Yeah, because I mean, when I look at this, I'm like, well, you could effectively get rid of the finance committee, because most of the stuff that we deal with, like with the budget, that's a whole council meeting. I mean, it may be a finance committee meeting, but everybody's here, everybody participates in that.
That is true, but, uh, to give an example, when we had to make budget adjustments, um, which required a budget amendment because of having to move money around, um, it would make sense to go to a finance committee to make those recommendations, do all the reviews of it, and then make that recommendation to the council.
Right.
So maybe the answer is, instead of calling it the finance, maybe we remain, keep it the administration committee, which does give us ability to add additional, uh, topics or focus into that committee, and not just strictly budget-related.
Or just eliminate it. I'm just-
What, what's your pleasure? I mean, I mean, we're, you know, I, I, the, the whole goal here is to try and make it a more efficient process, in that each committee has the ability to make budgetary decisions, or ordinance decisions, about the focus area that they cover.
So let me just then, let's, if we turn the page-
Okay.
And look at the strategic vision topics.
Look, I have more here.
Oh, yeah, no, but I mean, this relates to the, the, the realignment. Then you look at the strategic vision topics, and finance has two, and one of those is actually also under community development. Infrastructure has one, Parks and Recreation has a bunch, community development has a bunch. So it's not, it, it's not sort of distributing the work evenly from that standpoint.
Fair enough.
Um.
So if we eliminate, and let's go down that pathway, if we eliminate finance committee, because the finance committee slash, it was originally finance committee, we made it administration committee, we're now talking, making another, make it back to finance, or eliminate. The number one thing that that committee has had oversight on is the budgeting, the overall budgeting workshop, which is probably, of all the things that we do as a city council, is the most important thing, because it determines how we spend taxpayers' money. And so, um, you know, I rank that task very high on, on what we do as a council. Um, if we eliminate finance, which committee should we put that in? Would that be community development?
That's committee of the whole thing, I mean, to me, it's committee of the whole.
Right.
So you want, um, because in the past, we've not required all, um, uh, commit, you know, council members to attend the workshop budget, which was always in that committee, um, although many did come, and of course, some left who weren't part of that, you know, because of their obligations. Um, you're willing to have a committee of the whole to accomplish that, that workshop, is, cause that's-
I think that should be one of the four, I mean, I, if we're shooting for, you know, every three months for a committee of the whole, that should be one of the meetings we do every year. Um, as long as you have a quorum and can vote, you know, if, if someone can make it through three-fourths of it, and they have to leave, if they, if they've made their points, and they've been part of the process, they might not be the vote, but they're gonna vote on it eventually, as part of council anyway, you know, in the, at the regular city, yeah, I have no problem with that. I agree with you, that is probably the most important meeting we do, or one of them, I've got it out.
Which is why we always encourage, you know, everybody to be there.
Absolutely do, yeah, and the public, too.
Yeah, exactly, I mean, that's-
I still think, though, that, that there's, you need, we need to have something to look at the monthly expenses, and I-
Yes, so we, uh, up to now, to that point, the chairperson has always had independent access to city accounts to view them.
Right, and I think you're gonna lose that important internal control.
That's a check and balance that we put in place, um, which is an important check and balance. We need to accommodate that somehow.
I also think of things like, um, when we were discussing the park deficit, you know, that was done through the fin, administrative committee, because it was a financial matter, was technically a park matter, but not really, because we were-
Right, because it kept coming up in the audit.
And it was an audit issue, you know, so it goes to our internal controls, our fund balance, that policy was done through the administrative committee, who would handle that? So when you ha, start having these things come up, like a fund balance policy, or deficit, and those kind of things, now you have to figure out which one of these remaining three committees is going to decide on that. Or are you gonna have a community, committee of the whole meeting for every one of these things? So I think that's gonna be less efficient than if we keep the fourth committee, and have, as Charlie said, that be the oversight of, of the finances in general. I think we're gonna have a difficult time getting all eight people to, together for a committee of the whole meeting, when things like that do come up. The budget's once a year, right? So that's a little bit easier to manage, but-
My understanding was that, uh, Carl used to actually go in and go item, line item by line item down that-
Every month.
Report.
Yeah.
And, and I'm not saying that somebody needs to do that, but it seems to me like the, that would be a monthly committee meeting to go through that and say, does anything stand out? Or is there, is there any questions that you wanna ask Deb about that report?
Yeah, cause I get it.
Why did we pay this electrical outfit, what seems to me like twice as much as we should've paid? That kind of thing, that's, to me, what a finance committee should be involved in.
Yeah.
Or your state's tax revenue, those kind of things, tracking your state's tax revenue, requesting that, gaming tax.
Gaming tax, all of those type of revenues.
So if we have that, as the committee looks at that, you know, cause I look at it, it's sent to me, but, you know, there's no, like, oh, make sure you study this, and let me know if anything jumps out. I used to like send a note to Dave, and like, wow, that's a lot of, you know, income from gaming, yeah, I agree.
And, and, you know, somebody can bring some other, something to trigger something else, and, you know, it doesn't have to be a long meeting.
No, 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 I agree.
It just seems like something that's kind of important, you know. Earlier, I heard some, mentioned Dixon, and it seems to me that that's probably one thing, you know, they probably had the, uh, you know, the financial sheet and the consent agenda, you know, so.
Yeah.
Which is why we removed it from the consent agenda to make you look at it, right?
And actually vote, yeah.
And vote on that very item, uh, so that is no longer in the consent agenda, cause that's an additional- Yeah. Control. Um, I'm, again, I, my recommendation was to have a finance committee, if you, if you're going down that pathway, I think we're on.
And Mike, I'm bringing it up as, as eliminating it as sort of a devil's advocate thing, like, okay, what, do we really need this at all? So.
I think it's very important to keep it, in my opinion.
Uh, Laura, you have any input on this issue?
I don't like the idea of having everything, like, kind of hidden, so I think we do need a finance committee.
Matt, you have any input on this?
Uh, I honestly didn't see what was wrong with other committees, the way they were set up before.
Okay, John, anything?
Um, no, other than I, you know, I, I kind of agree with Matt on that, but I do, um, I like the idea of the committees having more control to, um, to, to cut the middleman out, basically, to not have to go back through administration, then to the city council, or back to somewhere else, and then to the city council. I like, you know, the committee, you got the committee there, the four, the four members of the city council, you're, the rest of the council's more or less trusting them to, uh, to do their job. And so why it has to go to another committee before it goes to council is, is, I think, ridiculous. So, yeah, if we could streamline the process, that'd be great.
So, um, what I'm hearing, I'll make sure I'm, I'm clear from what I'm hearing from you, is that the proposed structure still works, um, and, uh, with a couple of, of, um, uh, clarifications, like public properties versus, uh, public parks and not public parks, um.
I still have one to cover. Infra, the infrastructure one.
Uh huh.
Um, it, uh, what about other, you know, that, you know, this says, uh, transportation committee, and it's all about sidewalks and streets, but then you look at our vision, and it's internet, um, utility, and, um, public works. And none of that's listed anywhere.
Yeah.
Uh. So let's, let's add it, I mean, that's certainly an oversight.
What?
Waste water and utilities?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, just utilities, so wastewater.
Utilities and public works, well, public works is in this, so.
Yeah.
Is listed already. What about the, um, the, currently, community development has the, uh, broadband. But again, under strong re, what?
That's infrastructure.
Well, that's, and that's how it's listed, under the strong reliable infrastructure vision. Um, so if, to, you know, it's gotta go somewhere, and it seems to me that, that means that the infrastructure, formerly transportation committee, has taken on new responsibilities, which I'm, well, I don't even know if I'm gonna be the chairman, but, you, you know, it, it, um, would be okay with me if that happens. Um, but it just seems like it was left out of here, and it needs to, to be put in.
I agree. So, uh, the, when I became mayor, there was a water and sewer committee, right? And that committee met more often than nearly any other committee, uh, because we were leading up to the, uh, change, uh, wastewater treatment plan. And then when we created the admin committee, we moved that into the admin committee, those, those, um, that focus area previously. But, um, when we were looking at this restructuring, like, well, actually, that's an infrastructure, uh, but I think we left it off the list, is, is where we, uh, had that oversight. It would make sense if we're going to change transportation to infrastructure, to include those oversights into that committee.
Which actually helps even things out a little bit, if you look at it, cause I, you know, the community development was pretty loaded down, with a lot of stuff to do, and this kind of evens it out a little bit more, I think. Maybe not so much for finance, but for, um, the others.
Well, maybe you wanna keep the, that part of the infrastructure in finance.
Yeah.
Which part?
The wastewater and water.
No, no, that doesn't make sense.
What's also on this one for community and economic development committee, the current one, it says water and sewer issues as areas of oversight on the website.
Okay.
So I guess it shouldn't have been in admin, if it went, I can recall.
Okay, so, that's everybody in agreement with, um, that, is to add those there, or what?
Yeah. Yeah, I think utilities, any public works, any community infrastructure, um, makes sense, that that's a committee, because it's all integrated, and that's one of the things we talked about at the, um, at the retreat, was it's not just, you know, you know, they all work together somehow.
They do, yes, yes.
And the trees, so I kept inserting trees in there, too, cause the trees work with that, too, you know.
Are you the Lorax?
I am. No, but, I mean, really, from a practical standpoint, as we've talked at the tree board, you know, in terms of planting, you know, we have, we have water mains, um, and sewer mains, and things that, that, you know, we have to think about, you know, when we're planting trees, you know, so it's, thinking about that holistically is, yeah, exactly. Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Actually, it is listed here under key strategies, that, um, that we want to complete a citywide infrastructure study to establish a replacement plan for streets, sidewalks, water sources, and, and trees.
Yes, yes, I know, I was just looking at that. Strong, reliable infrastructure, and that's, I mean, to me, that's a big meaty committee.
That's a, that's a big meat of a lot of what we do, for sure.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Okay, that's all I had on that.
Okay, so, um, I think we have some consensus, that the infrastructure should, a committee, formerly transportation committee, should include what transportation and utilities, wastewater, public works, any kind of utilities within, uh, the city, trees, uh, outside of the tree board, um, that, uh, in that committee. I think Parks and Rec is pretty straightforward, I don't think there's any issues there.
After Aquatic Center, I think you should add Aquatic Center and park property to define that in that, in that group. And then, under community development, it should say public properties in parentheses, cities not park land, are not park property. Um, and I- properties in parentheses, not parkland, are not park property, um, and, uh, there's going to be, I would think there's going to be public property, they're going to be considered by finance as well, like disposition of the things that police collect and things like that. You're going to discuss that, right? You know?
So for, like, surplus property?
Yeah, or, yeah, stuff, you get, like, computers here you're going to get rid of or whatever.
Community development, because it's public property.
Surplus properties always come to admin.
Yeah, that's, that's true. So...
So let's put it there, then.
Call it surplus property, then?
Yeah.
I mean, surplus property, that's, that's, that really is, the only use is to be sold, that community development really doesn't care.
Right.
We're not going to use it for anything. If it's being, if we're, let's say we have public property that's surplus, but we decide we maybe want to do something with it, then that makes sense to come back to community development. I guess the way that I see this is, each one of these committees mirrors the department heads that we have, that we've now hired for, uh, the city, so the way I kind of see the task list is almost already existing, because it would be like, all right, uh, community development, purview, if it's something that Donovan pretty much handles in his, uh, in his department, then it would make sense for 99.9% of that to probably go through community development, parks and rec, same thing, pretty much anything that would go through Deb or Lou that doesn't already have a, a solid bucket in one of the other departments, then that would probably just go to admin 99% of the time. So I kind of just look at it and say, well, if a department head comes to city council and says, hey, there's something I need addressed.
Where do you go?
That's almost always going to go to whatever committee that mirrors their department, I guess is the way to...
So in this case, um...
That's just how I see it.
Then, that's fair, so public works, you know, let's look at our departments, public works and utilities makes sense to go to, uh, transportation, or now the infrastructure. Parks and recreation, the parks and recreation committee. The, um, but we need to talk then about, and community development to community development, police. Now, we do have a police commission that covers police hiring and police policies, but there...
That's just appointed, right? And that doesn't come to...
It doesn't come to council. But there are sometimes police issues that will come to council, and we need a place to put those.
I, I think that would probably, in my mind, that would go to admin.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Because that's outside of our, that would exist outside of our department heads' roles. That would be a separate thing.
There, and, and just be clear, we do have a police commission that handles the hiring and firing and those kind of things, but there are other issues that I think there'll be opportunities that we need to bring it to a committee, and so admin or, or, have we decided admin or finance, what do we want to call that?
I would call it admin.
Makes more sense.
I don't care. Okay.
Admin will have finance, surplus property, ordinances not directly related to duties, and then police issues, or police whatever, I don't know what you want to call it, I don't know if you want to call it issues.
Would you plan, it's the safe community category, um...
Yeah.
Um, but then also, I agree with Charlie, the, the EEG, the efficient, effective government stuff, a lot of that seems to be more overarching rather than in a department.
Yes, in a, in a digital department, and that would make sense that the admin would have, um, a focus area for that.
Yeah, like, and I know Charlie's brought it up before, like, with the website and communication issues, and how to improve, how to improve that, and that seems like a good, good place for that, because it's, yeah.
So instead of police matters, could we call it public safety? That kind of encompasses...
There you go.
Donovan brought that up.
And then, obviously, Deb's department, which is finance, you know, that makes perfect sense to, to that committee. Are we missing anything?
Um, I have a question about one thing, because, um, the last couple weeks, I took some time and reread the, um, Zukowski, Rogers, Flood, and McCardle, um, Public Officials book, that, yes, yes, I reread that.
EJ, you wrote that?
That, uh, that, the verded.
Zer-.
Yes, Richard, Rich Flood and Ruth Schlossberg, um, and one of the things that I noticed in there, which I didn't remember, is that, um, there's a specific reference to, um, it being problematic, having, um, non-elected people on committees that have legislative responsibilities, um, AKA our parks committee, that we're talking about our committees being, um, wanting to empower them to be more, um, to have that authority, you know, to, to do the legislative work, and on the parks committee, we have two people who are appointed, who were not elected, and, um, I don't have anything against either one of them, but that had, that strikes me as odd. I mean, other communities with parks who want to engage more members of the community to represent different perspectives, they have a commission or something like that, where it's a, a more robust, um, group of people representing different interests that meets, you know, quarterly or what have you, um, to, to advise, but the, um, the legislative stuff, um, is actually elected officials that are tasked with doing that.
And that's a very valid point. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee slash Board has had a lot of, um, changes, certainly in my tenure with the city. It used to be a strictly elected positions that sat on that board, and under the former mayor, he felt it's very strongly, because there was so much turmoil at that time, especially with the, the, um, institution of park fees, sort of various not-for-profits, that he felt it would be better to also supplement that committee with members at large of the community that were appointed, and so at that time, the city council agreed, and we've kind of maintained that structure since. If the council's pleasure is to rea- redo that committee so that it is more aligned with the other committees, I, I'm certainly not opposed to that consideration, because I, to a degree, agree with you. If, if the parks, and here's the issue, and, and this is what I've stated in the past, anytime there's an appointment, the appointment gives the mayor additional power over a particular focus area, because he gets to choose who those people are. Uh, now, granted, I will state that there's not always a lot of applicants for these positions, and there's a limited number of people to select from, but still, nonetheless, that does give the mayor additional power that he can, um, you know, wield on the community. I think, in my perspective, I see that, you know, the members that have sat in, as members of the public that have sat on that committee, have provided some valuable input, um, but to your, uh, to your point, they're not elected, and so it removes that ability for the public to have a direct input on what happens in that committee, because now, a portion of that committee is, uh, appointed by the mayor, and in fact, at one point, I had recommended eliminating those people because of that very point, and at one point, we had, uh, five members at large and four elected, which puts the weight of power...
Yeah.
...to the mayor, and those, you know, members at large, and so the council at that time reduced it, um, to seven, but we still have a vacancy, and have had a vacancy, so it's remained six for, I think, about two years. Um, so, I have made this recommendation in the past, if the council wants to reconsider that, we will put that on the next agenda for you to, to consider.
Just to clarify, though, the, the, you do have the right to appoint, but that, they have to be, that, they have to be approved by council, they cannot be put on the board.
Oh, absolutely, yes, all appointments go through the council for confirmation.
So the power's not, the power's not just with you.
That is true, um, however, let's look at history, how many appointments have been denied?
Without question, without question.
So, you know, there is a give and take there, but, you know, you know, I'm being very transparent here, that, that the mayor does have a huge influence when he makes appointments, and I had made that recommendation to the council to eliminate that, because, in my opinion, it's a committee of the city, they should be elected officials that, that the, uh, the populace get to elect and determine who sits within that board, so...
But even, even though you appoint them, that doesn't mean they agree with you.
Oh, that is true, and, and, um, I think there's probably members on this council who have been appointed by me in their seat before they were elected, and I have stated to them, I don't expect the council to agree with everything that I say. In fact, I value disagreement, because it ensures that we have all perspectives considered when we make our decisions. So, um, if it is the council's desire, we'll put that on the agenda, uh, for the regular city council meeting for you to consider.
I'd make a motion to put that issue of the parks, um, non-elected, park board non-elected members on the next city council agenda.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Personally, I, I kind of like having, I kind of like having, uh, the input, I, I think there's some valuable input that, from what I've seen on the, on the park board, um, or park, uh, committee, um, from the, uh, appointed members, um, so I, you know, I, I like it how it is, but, um...
I, I just think the timing's bad. I mean, it may not be a bad idea, but it just seems like the timing's bad right now to do that. Probably better to do right after an election or something like that.
Well, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to second that, and I think we should vote on it. I think we should vote on it, and if we don't want to do it right now, we don't have to do it right now.
Just to clarify, the motion right now is merely to, is merely to put it on the agenda, the decision would actually be debated and made at the council meeting.
All right, well, I have a motion and a second to put, uh, this on the next city, regular city council's agenda to, for consideration and discussion. Are there any additional discussion on the issue? Hearing none. Uh, Lou, please take the roll.
Hatterley?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lovely?
No.
Cronkros?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
No.
Perkins?
Yes.
Uh, five to two.
Okay, um, any other comments on this agenda item? Okay, hearing, no?
Sorry.
No?
Just making sure, because on this one, I guess, because we have something else on agenda eight, I know Hall, you can't be too broad in that session, it's just something we're talking about us being more aware of where it's, where we should be, personnel issues that are coming up, which I know there's going to be a few of it that we just got in the last week, but stuff like that, more aware, because I think that, as a city council, I think that's where we've been kind of, some of us have been upset that we haven't, you know, known about this, and the constituents has to come up and talk to us and say, hey, have you not, and you're like, no, I didn't know this. So I don't know if that's more for eight, or where to put that in to discuss that stuff.
Uh, Alarmin, I'd say we can discuss that under, uh, agenda item eight.
Okay, just making sure, I just didn't want to wait till then and know I can't do it.
No worries. Um, along with this item, uh, agenda item three was the strategic vision task assignments, and we had not really discussed that in detail. These are, um, recommendations of where to put these, um, uh, these items. Do you see any issues with the way we have put this together for you? Do you want to move them to a different group? Um, just seeking your input here to see if this is the direction that we can charge forward with.
I assume that we'll add those new items to infrastructure that we talked about.
Right, yeah, because there's a lot in the strategic vision that is infrastructure.
We can make those changes.
So was it decided, um, if the wifi was going to then be moved into infrastructure because of the fact that it was...
Yes, it was. That was my understanding, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
And then I think we talked about having some, um, admin oversight or whatnot review with the EEG, um, items.
Yeah, I, the, the stuff that, we're jumping ahead, but the stuff, some of the stuff that's under mayor city administration, um, the last, one, two, three, four, five, five items, bullets, I'm just saying that the oversight for those should probably be added to the admin, that's what I'm saying. That's what I said, anyway, is that right, Lisa, is that what you're talking about?
That's what I was talking about, yeah, that makes sense to me.
So the, um, to be sure we're clear, improved code, let's scroll this down so we can see it, uh, these five items, which were improved code enforcement to address properties in poor conditions and abandoned properties, uh, complete housing stock and residential land inventory to inform a residential development and housing plan.
Wouldn't those all go under community development for oversight?
I think it means the first page.
The first page.
Oh, the first page, sorry, you said the last five, I'm sorry.
Yes, last five on the first page.
That, that all fell under the same thing, okay. My, my apologies, I misunderstood. So these five, which would be increased information available in Spanish along with translation supports, uh, review staffing mix, matrix by department and succession planning model, increase engagement with McKinney County Council of Government, explore, uh, partnerships with neighboring communities to share resources, improve communication with residents, and explore, um, PT communication person, some type of part-time person.
And I think more from a, in, in...
Yeah, just for a back and forth...
Yeah.
...discussion, you know, contact with...
Right.
Um, because, uh, when staff comes up with how they're going to do this and so on, it'd be nice to let some...
Yeah.
So how about, um, then we consider EEG to go under finance, although I do see one EEG that we listed under community development.
But it's also listed under finance.
Yes.
Or under admin.
It is.
Yeah.
So maybe the answer here is that any effective, efficient government will fall under finance, um, unless it absolutely makes sense to go somewhere.
Yeah, you can call it admin, we're going to call it admin.
Yeah, I'm sorry, admin, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's make that change.
Um, the, under fin- admin or finance or whatever it actually is, um, launch a resident survey to inform cities' work and decision-making. Um, okay, and then there's the exact same things under community development.
Yeah, so just draw a line through the one in community development.
Yeah. Okay, but what I, what I was wondering too, though, is that, you know, I couldn't, at first, when I first read this, I couldn't tell what, which way it was going, you know, to inform, um, the city's work and decision ma- you know, I, in other words, I read it wrong, and, and it's, but it made me think that maybe what we also need here is a blog, this is where I was talking about many times, where...
Yeah.
There's, this, this is communication to send out a survey then to the residents of Harvard to find out what they're thinking. Uh, you know, I like the idea of sending what we're doing, including all this, to the public and let them respond.
Uh, so more of a marketing kind of thing, yeah?
Well, we've got the, it's improved... Well, we've got the, it's improved communication with residents, and then have, that's the explore part-time communication person, but that's, you know, those aren't the same thing, you know, I mean, it's improved communication with residents is like a bigger category. They can be a lot of different things.
Yeah, and I was also thinking that actually all these committees should be doing that. I mean, that, that kind of, whatever we're up to.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, looking at, at what Rob's been doing, for instance.
Outstanding.
Yeah, I mean, that's great.
So my recommendation then would be for these individual committees who are, um, kind of, uh, connected to these various departments, that we enable those departments to, uh, publicize what's happening in each of the committees, uh, do you want that to come from our staffing like Rob has been doing, or do you as, uh, board members want to make that message?
That's not the easiest thing in the world to do right, and
I agree.
And, um...
And, and, you know, the question is, do you feel comfortable taking on that responsibility, or do you want to assign that responsibility to staffing who will, will figure out how to do?
I think we should assign it to somebody to, um, work on how we do this. I don't think we're at the point where we can just assign it and say, "Do it."
Oh, I, I agree, I mean, you know, um, our resources within city staffing, uh, you know, we've been trying to hire people who have some of the skill sets for each department.
It's hard.
But recognize that there's a whole profession of just marketing, and so
Yes.
You know, maybe the answer is at some point in the future, we have a marketing person. It would not hurt us to have one at some point, I just don't know that we're ready for that yet.
Right.
But in the meantime, where do we put that? It would make sense to me that that would go to, to admin.
Yeah, 'cause that's
Do you agree?
Beyond one department, yeah.
I, I, I would like to, because it's one of those things where it's just new, sort of, and I'd like to put this in admin and, um, and then work with the high school and the community college to see if we can find somebody, you know, some people working on that exact same thing, if, if, you know, to become a career.
Right.
And see if we can provide them some practical experience.
An internship.
Yeah, internship.
Uh, I was putting it another way, 'cause that's kind of a dirty word, but yes, okay.
Non-paid apprenticeship.
Yeah, yeah, well, it, but it could include some pay, I suppose, but I, I'm just saying that, um, it, it just seems like there's, there is some, an untapped resource.
There's definitely a gap here.
And if that should, if, if admin's willing to take that on as an assignment, well, I think we can reach out and
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
I will just interject, though, part of community development is community relations, so does that fall as community relations?
It could, it could.
Is, is community relations Donovan's department? Or is that, is that a broader?
Maybe the answer is move community relations to admin
To admin.
and take it out of your department, because I see community relations, obviously there's different definitions of that, but it would certainly include marketing.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I like the outreach that we've seen from, uh, the Public Works Department, the way that they've been doing that, I think is a very, is very engaging and in a positive way, um, and in many cases, a lot of humor is injected in there, so it kinda disarms some of the, the
Yeah, the crankiness.
The crankiness, um, and I think that, from my perspective, the, the day-to-day, um, handling of that and the decisions on that, for me, would make sense to go through the department heads over that area, like, if it's a community development thing coming up, Donovan would be the one to oversee that and not us. And the reason I say that is, is that Donovan will know what he can say publicly and what he can't much quicker than we would. We would have to take the time to go through that, talk to TJ, what are we allowed to say? What are we not allowed to say? Then put together, you know, a press release kind of thing, and I think that in those situations, especially like with the parks, with our new Parks and Rec, um, department head, and Donovan especially, there's, we're potentially looking at a lot of changes, a lot of new, new growth, a lot of expansion in those areas, and we have to be careful how that stuff is disseminated to the public, because there's legal constrictions there. But as far as like a framework for how to do that, I mean, I see no reason why we can't just use the resources that we have now, like the Harvard 411, the Facebook-type communications and that kind of stuff in the interim. I'm comfortable with giving that direction to that.
Again, this is just to, to get additional help, you know, that's what we're talking about here, not to determine who does it. It, this, what I'm, what I propose is that we look for somebody to help with the, the physical capability of doing it, and then who they work with and so on would obviously be staff, so this is not
But how do we increase our capacity?
Yeah, how, you know, how do we get this off the dime, Dan?
Yeah, rather than just saying, "Okay, here Donovan, you figure out how to do this and do more of it with everything else you're doing." It's like, no, we need to somehow increase the capacity.
Again, you know, and, and they can help with some of the technical requirements and software requirements and that sort of thing with, not the substance.
Right.
Can the intern do the video stuff for us?
Get your own intern.
Yeah.
No, I, I suppose, yeah, but I mean, it, I'm just trying to concentrate on this one thing.
Yeah.
No, and I, I agree to get it going, and then, of course, it's gonna go off to the staff.
Yeah, it would go to, I mean, 'cause staff's the experts on these things, and, and they're, and they're
We don't, we don't
You know, even if, even if we did, you know, as, even if I, as an alderman, decided to, which I did once
You did.
Try to do that, I don't, I don't feel confident in the information that I have, how accurate it is. And, you know, and, you know, they could've had a meeting and completely changed something, and here I am telling everybody the wrong thing. So, no, it has to go through staff, of course.
But if we can help support
Yeah, and, and
Yeah, I think that's our job.
Help develop the system and, and how it's done to make it easy.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, uh, any other comments or suggestions? Yes?
Um, with the, um, arts and culture one, should we temporarily put that with Parks and Recs, because they actually talk about bikes and open spaces and everything else like that?
For the
It's the last one on the, um
This one?
Yes.
Stash and Arts.
Well, no, 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 no. Um, it's the create spaces for performance art or art displays, murals, and sculptures.
I see.
Because in the strategic vision, it starts talking about open spaces and, um, the bike paths, the parks, the greenways, and how to integrate the two together until we get its own committee.
So your recommendation is to go to which committee?
Do we want to put it in Parks and Recs?
That sit well with the rest of the council?
Makes sense to me, I mean, it specifically says here, "Open spaces, bike paths, parks, greenways, and community gardens are abundant throughout the community."
Certainly, like, the community garden has been there, I, 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 I've got no issue with putting that into the Parks, um, group, so.
Completely agree.
Okay. Let me just make that note. Any other, uh, recommendations or, or suggestions? Issues, comments? All right, hearing none, sounds like we have some consensus. Uh, Item Four is the strategic vision next steps. Which really is, which of these do we want to really kind of focus on? What strategies do you want, um, you know, maybe each, each, each committee needs to pick one or two, uh, areas that they wanna focus on?
I would think we should send it to the committees and let them
Okay.
Do.
Let's do that, then.
Yeah, 'cause we could spend all night doing that.
So what I would ask is that each, 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 um, committee chair, um, we'll put this on your agenda for you to discuss at your next committee's. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Any other input? Okay, uh, Item Number Five is to submit a petition to Planning and Zoning Commission for UDO text amendments. And this is where I will ask, um, Donovan, if you could, uh, discuss what it is, text amendments that we would like to seek, uh, to submit to Planning and Zoning.
No, I just turned it on, it, it's, they're still coming, so the more we look into the book, the more that we find, but I think there's some structural issues that need to be corrected right away, um, like the difference between the images that were in the UDO that people were hanging their hat on compared to the verbiage in the UDO, so the images need to match what the verbiage says, so these are some amendments that would clear things up right away. There's some structural issues with what it states for the required square footage per lot, per dwelling, compared to what it states for the verbiage, specifically for duplexes, there's conflicting words there, and so at the next council meeting, we can present the petition for you to make a recommendation that it be sent to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then take several months to really dive into the rest of the things that aren't so critical right now, but will come up eventually, and this could be something, maybe a chapter at a time that we do type of thing, but, uh, I think right now, for the next council meeting, to present a petition on the two or three things that need to be addressed right away.
So this wouldn't go to Community Development Committee first?
However you would prefer, we can, you can go to Community Development, then make a recommendation for City Council, who would then make a recommendation to send it to Planning and Zoning, or bring it to the council.
But I'm concerned that it's a, less than a week before the council meeting, and we don't have anything.
Sure.
That we, we don't have any, you know, language.
I guess my question would be in regards, go to my committee, what's the, what's the level of urgency to get these items addressed? Obviously, they're more urgent than, than others. Is it something that needs to happen this month?
No, no.
Then I'm comfortable with it going to Community Development for a full, for a deeper review, and then submitting
City Council in July.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause we can, we can do it second week in July, and then go to City Council, and then send it to Planning and Zoning.
Yeah.
And they'll probably review it September, I would think they wouldn't get it in August, it'd be too late.
It would be too late, it would be September.
Yeah, well, let's try for that timeline, I think that works.
Yeah, I, I, I do think that, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with going to Community Development for preliminary, like, for the deep dive.
Yeah.
That makes sense, um, but, I mean, even with the stuff that's less important, if we're changing the UDO, I definitely wanna make sure that it doesn't go to, straight to City Council for just a preliminary once-over, and then we vote on it, because, um, I wanna be more mindful of the Planning and Zoning, uh, Board's time, uh, so that that way they can review it, get it done, and get it back to us, instead of it going to them, having them make a bunch of changes, then come back to us, and then make a bunch of changes, and then go back to, so that way we've
Right.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, and recognize, you know, we run across issues with, um, city code all the time where we find errors and misspellings, but in this particular case, because it's UDO, it does have to go through Planning and Zoning before the, um, council can actually take action on it. So, um, I do note that we, I recently ran across some errors within our, just, not the UDO, but the code, uh, so I do expect that we probably will bring those to you for some, um, and really, it's about lettering and numbering that just needs to be resolved. Where past city councils, um, added a paragraph, and then the associated numbers didn't get, uh, corrected, so now you've got some, you know, we run across these things.
Yeah, D and D.
Yeah, yeah, D and D versus D E, right? Okay, uh, any other, um, comments?
No, it's, Mayor, is that sometimes, just 'cause it just got input wrong, 'cause I know when I was more involved with the ordinance, it seemed like we did do a lot of them as well when we add things, but we made sure to add in
I, I think, um
These subsections.
Where these things have happened is it, it, uh, council has made some change to the code, and that change got incorporated, but for whatever reason, there was an error, inadvertently didn't change the correct numbering, so
Now, does that have to go back to us, or can't that just be a staffing that's to readjust, 'cause it's not like we changed the verbiage.
That is, that's a good point.
I mean, what's, yeah, what's considered a Scrivener's error
Uh, I would, um, defer to council.
Distinguished attorney, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, and I'm gonna give the lawyerly answer here, but it really just depends, right? I mean, if, it's, like, the, the D D example, it's not like, it's not fatal, right? You just have to clarify it when you're discussing it. Obviously, that's something that we wanna clean up, um, you know, and, and I think the proper way to do it is to actually go through the process and clean it up, um, you know, but if, for example, there's just a typo in an ordinance, like, that can be cleaned up, but again, it really depends on the circumstances and exactly, like, how big of a difference does it make? Properly, the conservative approach would be to actually formally go through and have a correct ordinance with the proper, you know, lettering or numbering and all that stuff. Does everybody do that all the time? No, some people are a little more loose with it, and they just say, "Well, this is what we meant, it was supposed to be D and E," so that's how the ordinance is gonna say. Not that we're recommending that, sometimes clients like to do that, so.
Thank you for that non-answer.
So I went to law school, real law school.
Uh, I guess it, it, it falls down to your, um, pleasure, my recommendation would be, anytime we make a change, we should just go through the process to ensure that we're open and transparent. That would be my recommendation. And those kind of corrections are a very easy agenda item. You review it, explain, "Hey, this should be D and E instead of D D," and you vote to fix it, and then we correct it. So I, I don't think it's gonna waste a lot of council's time to do those, and I think we can bring those directly to council for those kind of errors. When there's an error that is, has substance to it, I think we need to bring those to the appropriate committee, but where it's a, a typographical, uh, issue, I think we can bring it straight to council, you guys approve it, and we can fix it, uh, unless the council has other thoughts.
That sounds, that sounds good, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, any other comments or, uh, questions about Item Five for text amendments for the UDO? It sounds like we're gonna go to, to committee in July and go forward with that process. None? Okay, we'll move on to Item Six, which is business registration. Um, I do wanna report that I had, uh, that mayor's listening tour this past Monday, we had about forty businesses. I, I thought, well, there were more than, some business more than one people, person came, so I think it was about forty businesses. I don't know the exact number, maybe Donovan, do you know?
About thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay.
Forty-five people attended, thirty-five businesses.
All right, thank you, uh, for that clarification. So, um, I did mention to them that, um, you know, one of the things that we struggle with as a city is to communicate with our businesses, because we don't know all the businesses that are here, and we don't have their correct contact information, or who to contact within the organization. Now, our police department does have some of that, like if they have an alarm, a burglar alarm, and they contact the point of, you know, whoever the key holder is. Sometimes that information is wrong, and they're unable to get ahold of anyone. So the idea of having a business registration, um, really allows us to create a dialogue with our businesses and, and firm, you know, know who is within our community, and to be able to communicate with them in a more effective manner. My recommendation is that we do this registration free of charge for the businesses, because I feel that it will be a benefit to both the business and to the city as a whole, um, but we certainly want your input on this.
I see no problem with registering them free of charge, I mean
Do we have a list? Do we have a list of all the businesses in, in Harvard?
We do not, that's one of the issues we have, so So when we go to try and make plans, or we look for funding, or we look for grants, and sometimes we need to explain, you know.
I guess how are you going to get participation? How you know you're going to get all the participation?
We will never know, you know, from that perspective, but I think as more and more businesses register, and they see a value in it by us being able to communicate with them, my hopes are that, you know, all the businesses would.
And we ran a list of commercial water accounts, but you have multi-tenant buildings that are on one water meter. So it'll take some efforts to get the word out, to capture all the businesses. And this was discussed April tenth at the Community Development Committee. Talked about the software that we have for free, and talked about it being free registration and whatnot. Haven't had any negative feedback on it yet, even when it was introduced to the businesses on Monday. This will, and within the registration process, we're, we want to capture like their anniversary dates, for how long they've been in business. It's on the economic development side that can allow us to market their business on Facebook. Hey, congratulations, one year anniversary, five year anniversary.
It will also allow us to create a business listing of all businesses in, in the city, and a directory that we can put on our website to help guide people to those businesses. Now, I should state that.
Partly the chambers.
I was just about to state that we are members of the chamber, and up until this time, we have relied on the chamber to perform that type of, of value add to those businesses. But I know for a fact that there are many businesses that refuse to join the chamber, and they're being left out. And as a city, we should not delineate that we will only help you because you're a member of the chamber. If you're a business in our community, you should be, have the same resources available to you from the city as any other business. But if we don't know you're here, we can't. So does the chamber do this kind of thing? They do, but again, not everybody is a member of the chamber, and nor can we require them to be a member of the chamber. And of course, unless you make this, you codify the requirement to be a business registered, you know, it really is more about value add to the business, and creating a stronger business community that is in sync with the city, and the city is, is able to enable some of the things that businesses. Because here's the thing, when we tried to put this listening tour together, and we, you know, our standard processes are, we'll put it on Facebook, we'll put it on the sign, we'll make some posters, we'll hang them up. But I know unless that business is looking at social media, or drives by the sign, or happens to see this thing, they're not going to be, get notified of it. So I personally went door to door of, I don't know how many businesses, well over a hundred businesses, and invited them directly, like, I don't have any other, I don't know how to contact, to invite them to come. And, and Donovan has done some of that with me, and some of them, we've kind of, you know, divided and conquered kind of thing. But there are other businesses that don't necessarily have, you know, their home-based businesses, their other service businesses that we just don't know about. And when we, from an economic development perspective, really want to understand what the various sectors of business are within our community, that's a very important thing to know, and to be able to market Harvard as a community that has these various sectors with established business base. And so I think there's a lot of benefits from having this, you know, and so, and again, to Donovan's statement, we haven't really received any negative feedback with this idea, but we really need your, you know, authorization to really kind of create this program and put it in place. Is the software up and running?
Not the business license portal yet, no. So we'd anticipate that this would go live in August.
Will it be online for anybody who wants to fill out the form?
Yes, so it would all be online registration.
So there's really no cost? I mean, you, you got the software for free.
Correct.
And, and, you know, so are, the, the impact on the budget is negligible, if any?
So we budgeted twelve thousand as a rough estimate in the Economic Development Fund as revenue for business licenses, but I believe it was Alderman Schultz during the workshop that questioned, what are we doing? And at that time, we hadn't really established any parameters to the program. Lou and Donovan hadn't worked on that yet, so we offset that in miscellaneous, because we really, so we really didn't tag it to anything special that they wanted to do. So no, long story short, it would not, because if we're not going to collect that revenue, then we're obviously not going to spend it out of miscellaneous. So they're well aware of, of the economic development budget and what they have to work with. So that was all hashed out, I believe, between them before they made this decision.
Yeah, the initial conversation included annual inspections at twenty-five dollars a business, but we just don't have the capacity to do that at this time, so.
So it, it's offset, sorry.
So I, I, I make a motion that we authorize Community Development Department to create a business registration, however they deem to make that happen.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Schultz, second by Lancaster, to authorize business, Community Development to create a business registration, to register our businesses within the city of Harvard.
Do we need to put it free of charge?
I would amend that, to say free of charge, would you second that?
I would second that.
To create this business registration free of charge. And to be clear, this would be businesses located within the city's corporate limits. So just to be clear, because there are people who live in Harvard, but not within the corporate limits. So those businesses, you know, would not fall under this business registration. Any other comments or questions? This would have been very handy had we had such a registration when the PPP things came out for our businesses, to notify them that these loans were available. We didn't have a way of doing that effectively. And we often get things from the Department of Commerce and Economic Development that we could share with our businesses, but we don't have a way of doing that, so, you know, I, I see a lot of value that can come out of this. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, Lou, please call a roll. Schultz?
Yes.
Mowley?
Yes.
Conkros?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Hannah Line?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, this is to discuss section two point zero five E, disturbing meetings, and section two point zero five F, public comment at meetings regarding rules and procedures. So a couple of Aldermen had contacted me seeking to have a discussion about this, because in several recent public meetings, there was a lack of decorum, and we, I believe, would like to visit this issue to determine, is there a better procedure in permitting and, you know, accommodating public comment, but addressing when there is no decorum?
So number, number two, under section two oh five, under F, individuals wishing to be heard on an item that is included in the agenda, it says will. And I think that might need to be changed in May, because I think that's where you run into problems where we, if we don't provide.
Why, why wouldn't we provide?
If, if it's not necessary.
Well, I think, I think that's where any issue, because you have to be able to give the public an opportunity to speak on any topic.
But we, we don't necessarily have to do that throughout the meeting. The school district only allows for public comment at the beginning of their meetings.
Right, so the way our ordinance is written, that if they have a comment that is on something not on the agenda, that is, that they typically has its own agenda item, which is usually at the beginning of the meeting, and that the code then that goes on to say if they have a comment about an item that's on the agenda, that they would give an opportunity during that agenda item. Are you suggesting that all comments for all items should be in that first thing?
I think we should consider that.
Okay.
But that's just, I'm just throwing that out as a discussion point.
And I will certainly state that, you know, our obligation by our current code is to permit up to three minutes for any individual to make a comment to the city council. But number one, there is no requirement to give a response from the council. Oftentimes, especially when it's not something on the agenda, you can't really talk about what they're discussing or what they present to council, because there's no agenda item to do so. Otherwise, then, the, the public did not have an opportunity to be present to discuss that item. So that's why it's always at the beginning of the meeting, if someone wants to address council about an issue, they can do so, we can take notes and address at a later date, because it's not on the agenda. And then under the agenda items, where you can discuss those things, and give a response if you care to, under those agenda items gives you that opportunity. But there is no requirement for you to respond to what the constituent or vendor, whoever it is, that's addressing under those particular agenda items, although typically we do, or have, because we're talking about that very item. Where I think we do need to make adjustments, and this is my personal opinion, is allowing repeated comments after they've made a comment. So I think it would behoove the council to agree that you have three minutes, you've made your three-minute comments, you do not get a rebuttal.
Well, and one way, you know, that I've seen other places do it, which I think is helpful, is in particular, if there are a large number of people there that may want to speak, is to have them sign in and put their name down and address, and, and actually on a list.
Yeah.
That then we have, that then we're going down the list, and it's, it just makes it a little more organized.
Certainly.
Provides a framework that.
The fire department used to do that, I don't know if they still do.
Certainly the county does this. They have a, they have a listing on a podium as you enter the meeting. If you would like to speak, that you put down your name, address, in order to be able to speak.
Of course, I really appreciate that, just from a record-keeping standpoint, much easier to make sure names and all that stuff is right.
Can we require that when they sign that registration, that they put their name and address and all that information onto the written record? So that in the cases where we tell them, state your name and, and address, and they just kind of don't, and continue to speak? We've got that information at least.
Yeah, I think you can definitely require the name, the address. That one's a little bit more tricky. I think you definitely, obviously, the name, I think, the way most municipalities handle it is address if you, if you wish.
I mean, you can make it voluntary, but at least that would help, because I know a lot of times that information is, is lost.
So basically, no debate is what.
Right.
Well, I think that has created additional lack of decorum when, because the conversation devolves. What if someone on the committee or city council wants to ask a question of that person who just spoke? Well, number one, I wanted to say first, if it's an agenda item, and the, and the person that's speaking is a party to the agenda item, for instance, it's a variance request, I would expect that there would be conversation between the council and that, that person. But that's not what I'm talking about. I understand that, but I wanted to make that clarification. For those that are not a party to the agenda item, but are members of the public that have a strong opinion about that, I don't believe there's, you know, I, I, I believe you have the option to ask a question. There's nothing preventing you from doing it, but you could prevent them from ask, you know, requiring you to answer their questions. Is that correct? Would you agree?
Yeah, I mean, you're not obligated to answer questions that are posed in, in public comment. And then as far as like, asking someone a question, obviously, there's some, some peril that goes with that, and all of a sudden now creating the back and forth, that I think we've all seen can, you know, kind of take the meeting off track. So I would tread very carefully there, but nothing prevents you from doing it. I don't know that we would necessarily advise it.
I don't know that you'd want to codify that issue. It gives you the option to do so without requiring or, you know, restricting you.
Looking at the, looking at our existing ordinance and our, our meeting rules as we have it, I mean, this body, since I've been here, I've always taken pride in the fact that we've always had decorum. We've always been able to speak to each other respectfully and, and have a healthy debate. Even when there's a little bit of sarcasm, or some joking back and forth, or a little bit of joshing here or there, nothing's ever done in, in bad faith, I don't think. The last year, I've seen a gradual breakdown of that. Not necessarily from us. There's been a couple of instances where I've been less than thrilled with some things that have gone on between us and, and this board, but not specifically the breakdown of decorum per se. I've prided us on being extremely generous with our patience and our time with constituents that want to contribute to the meetings. But I feel that in the last year, it has progressively gotten worse and worse, to the point where I don't feel like our time is being respected. I feel like it's being taken advantage of. And I think that there's been many instances in our, more so in our committee meetings, because there's more of those, where people feel that they are entitled to be an active participate, participant in the debate. And I would have to say that my viewpoint is, is that we are the elected officials. We are here for debate. They are not here for debate. They are, they have the right to put forth their opinions, their statements, how they feel about a subject. Let's just use the variance in this last meeting as an example. Any person in town that wants to submit for a variance has the right to do so, whether we agree with the variance or not. It can be the most absurd variance request we've ever heard. That person deserves every level of respect and decorum and consideration. If the zoning board is totally against it, and we're totally against it, that's fine. I don't think that any vitriol and anger and frustration over just the request of one is necessary. I am totally fine with people saying, I'm opposed to it. I don't really see anything beyond that really being necessary. You're either for or against it, and that's fine. What I've seen is, we don't enforce this enough, and I think that's the issue. And that's on us as committee, as committee chairpeople, and also in our meetings. And allowing the constant rebuttals, the constant arguing, the constant nagging between people, and the, and also, I'll point out, the disrespectful conduct from people towards us and other boards. People have the right to come up and say their opinions, but using verbal attacks towards members of this board or our staff is not appropriate, in my opinion, full stop. You can be upset about something, but it shouldn't be, you know, a constituent or anybody coming here and saying, you know, you know, yelling at Matt and, and saying something directly to him, or Charlie, or Laurie, or me, or anybody else in here. That's not acceptable, and.
But let's also keep in mind that we do need to allow them the opportunity.
I agree.
Sure.
But I think that, I think, and, and I'll be honest, I'm one of the people that expressed some concerns to Mike after the meeting, because it's been bothering me for quite some time, that I've been seeing more and more of these disturbances in our meetings, and more and more issues with this. And if we don't, if we do not put our foot down and, and make it clear that these are the rules, we will follow them at our meetings, we will have a timer put up in. the rules, we will follow them at our meetings, we will have a timer put up in, on the computer screen, three minutes, clock down. As soon as that three minutes is over, respectfully, your time is up, you may sit down.
County has a whole light system.
Yeah.
Like, green, yellow, red.
Whatever we need.
You're cut off.
Whatever we need, because the other side of this too, is in several committee meetings that we've had over the last year, we've had issues with audience members jeering and making rude comments to each other. And that's something that I won't stand for either. No, no constituent in this town should ever come to a meeting to, to be able to say their piece, their three minutes, whatever it is, and be afraid that someone sitting across the aisle from them is going to humiliate them in public, or make a nasty comment, or say something, or insult them.
Well, and let's, let's just, you know, it, it may seem like it's increasing, but it's that we haven't had any things that people were really passionate about, and where there was that participation. We haven't had those in the last few years, until more recently, where we've had a room full of people wanting to speak to something.
Well, I'll give an example of one that, that we've had in the last several years, that I feel that even though it was very, it wasn't this body, but the Parks Board. The Parks Board meeting when we discussed keeping the pool.
Oh.
That was an extremely, at the time, that was a very hot item. There was a lot of people that were very upset about that, and there, and going, and I went to that meeting, and I spoke at that meeting, and there was people walking in that meeting that were kind of nervous, because they didn't know which way it was going to go. And I felt that the decorum was held very well, considering that meeting was potentially a battle. So, I know we can do it, but I do, I have seen a breakdown gradually over time, not necessarily just because of contentious issues. And I, I've, I feel very strongly on this, because it's a level of respect for us, but it's also a representation of us reflecting back to the community. If we allow behavior like that, or we act like that, if we were, it gets progressively worse, and we have an incident like we did at our last meeting. And people will believe that it's okay, or it will encourage others that act out to not be checked, I guess. So, my, my thing is, we just need to be a lot more strict on this, and it, you, three minutes, no rebuttals, no additional discussions. If, I'm fine with asking a question if it's, if it's pertinent to the discussion, but we're going to have contentious issues. That's our job, is to figure that out, and we can't...
But I think as a, as a chair, you know, committee chair, you know, having, like, for me, reviewing this again, is, I think this is excellent, that we're, we're looking at this and talking about it, but for me, having, you know, okay, there's going to be, looks like this might be, there might be public comments, so just making sure that, for me, I have a statement to read before that public comment starts, that lays out, okay, this is how it's going to work.
And that's absolutely what District 50 does, before every meeting. This is exactly what they say. You have three minutes for public comment. When you're done, you're, you're, someone will contact with you within the next 48 hours to answer any questions that you have, or whatever it is. And, and, and I agree with Dan, this is all procedural more than anything, and it's on all of us. I would however recommend, under number three, it says, "Public comment may be restricted." No, public comment is restricted, it should be, that word should be changed to is. And then, if the mayor chooses, or the chairperson chooses to give additional time, that is at their discretion, and it says it right in that. So, I would recommend, my motion would be to change this to say is restricted. That's just my opinion. And, and yes, we get a timer, and we tell people, we have a statement that we read, because we're going to have this again. And when they, when they, the property over by Oak Grove...
Yeah.
Comes up in front of this group, or in front of the zoning board, and the zoning board had their, they were beaten, you know, I mean, it was embarrassing how they were treated, and we let that happen, you know? That should not have happened. It's not fair to those people. They're volunteers, just like us. So, I agree 100%. I mean, people have to know, this is how it is, this is what you do. And also, and I think our statement should say, any disruption in the meeting, or any attack in the meeting, you will be asked to leave. You will be asked to leave. There will, there's no question, you are going to be told to leave.
This is not a time for debate.
There's no debate on it.
This is, you can make your statement.
Right, make your statement and go.
Yeah.
Or make your statement and stay.
Yeah, and listen to what other people's statements are, but we ask that you be respectful of everybody who's here and everybody's opinion and right to speak. Yeah.
But, and I agree with all that, except that not all meetings are like that, of course, and that's why the word "may" is in there. I think you could, I mean, sometimes you may want to have a casual discussion with somebody.
The mayor can allow for that. It says right in that statement afterwards.
Mayor, chairperson.
The mayor, chairperson may permit additional...
It's not just city council, though, we're talking about, right? I mean, this is all meetings?
It says mayor or chairperson, so that would include committees.
Okay, so you could over, all right, well, that's fine, that's the same as "may."
But then, it's clear for the public, it's three minutes, period.
So, what we're getting rid of is the expectation that they're always allowed to speak at, you know, at will, ad nauseam, whatever you want to call it, and just decide that, I'm going to keep it here, and then, if we feel like it, so, it should be okay.
So, are we going to, I have a motion.
Yeah, I have a motion to change maybe on section 2.05 F, number three, change maybe to is.
I'll second that motion.
And that's it, though, then?
Yeah, that's it.
But that's to approve with that change?
That, that change, that's the only change I see need.
What about Lisa's? Do we want to have a sign in?
Well, that's procedural, right?
Yeah, I don't think you necessarily need that in the code. I mean, because, I thought, I mean, with that, like, if somebody comes in late and they're not able to sign up, like, even with the sign-up sheet, at the end of the sign-up sheet, we still are going to have to open it up and say, okay, is there anybody that didn't get the opportunity to sign up that would like to make a public comment?
All right, I just wanted to know if he was in there or not in there.
I've done that at the county, where I came in after they already took the sheet away.
Right, because they'll take the sheet away 10 minutes before the meeting starts, right? I know who's going to be speaking.
And I think, kind of to touch on what, what Lisa had said, I think that, just in my experience sitting on different bodies, if at the outset, there is a expectation set, especially with public hearings, like, I think, you know, a couple of public hearings where it has gotten, it has basically become a back and forth, that's really not how the public hearing should go, at least for the public comment part, right? There's a time where they get to make their comments, this body or the petitioners don't even really technically have to answer them. It's a public comment. They make a comment, you close public comment, and then it's, you know, you deliberate amongst your body, amongst this body, if you have questions, that's the back and forth, but it really shouldn't be a back and forth in the public comment section, because there's been meetings, not just here, but in other municipalities, where it's, public comment goes on for four hours, because the same person's coming up 12 different times, and it's like, that's just not very efficient.
And additionally, when a person makes a public comment, the, the comment should be addressed to the council or the committee, not to either a petitioner or other members of the audience, it's to the body, the governing body that is, you know, hearing the comment.
Right.
So, we have had those in the past who decided they wanted to address a petitioner for something that they were petitioning council for, or just other members of the audience, and that needs to be clear, that their public comment is to the, the governing body. And comments in the gallery, that's just not appropriate.
Take that outside, yeah.
Can I just add that to what Alderman Schultz said regarding the...
Planning Zoning Commission, we are working with TJ to do additional training or training for the Planning Zoning Commission, so that they understand what they can and can't do, and how to run that meeting efficiently, and...
And recognize, there are volunteers too, so, making sure, you know, I think we, as a, as a municipality, haven't given them the proper support and training, so we're going to fix that deficiency.
You know, send them to watch Lanay Acustra run the counties, planning if their zoning board meetings, and just follow her example. They are tight, that's a tight ship. Well, Charlie, aren't you on that?
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Only for the last 20 years.
Yeah. But she runs a very tight ship.
Yes, she does.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to adjust section 2.05 F3 to, from, public comment may be restricted, to state public comment is restricted to no more than three minutes for each individual speaker, and the rest of the, the mayor and, the mayor or chairman may permit additional comment in his or her discretion, taking into account that there are persons wishing to be heard on a matter, and the amount of village, I'd recommend we change village to city.
To city.
Business requiring attention.
I love that.
Care to amend your motion?
Yes, I do, thank you.
And I'll amend my second.
To strike village and replace with city?
What did we copy this from?
Yeah.
That might be our fault.
Yeah. Johnsburg.
I did motion.
Yeah.
Do you amend your second?
Yes, I amend.
Okay, so we have an amended and second motion to change both maybe to is and village to city. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, Lou, please call the roll.
Lobley?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Haderlin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes all.
Thank you, and I think to your notes earlier, we will add a sign-up sheet to make comment, public comment. I think we have an extra podium that we could station out in the hallway as people enter, and I would also recommend then, for staff, when we create this, that we add the bits about decorum and expectation of behavior. That way...
Yeah, you just need the statement that the chairman reads when we go into a public hearing, this, you know, like...
But if that's written at the top of that, so people understand what is expected of them.
Don't read it, we'll say it.
Yes.
Yeah, right.
Reinforce it.
Yes.
Something I wanted to add to that, just, and this is just one of my thoughts, again, coming out of the last meeting that we had. In a situation where we anticipate an extremely large reception of people coming in for an audience, or potentially a very contentious, because this would be an unusual circumstance, or a very contentious or very potentially disruptive debate or conversation, my thought would be to have staff direct, to allow for a police officer to be present in the room for those meetings, just because if we're going to have a large amount of people, I mean, it doesn't have to be excessive or anything, I mean, it could be deputy chief or chief just hanging around like we do, because in our last meeting, again, this was a one-off occurrence, so I'm not saying we need to have a solution for something that's not a problem. But we had two police officers here, and it was a good thing we did, because they were able to diffuse the situation quickly and, and handle the mayor's direction quickly. If we have a large amount of people here, and it is a contentious issue, we do have someone that's upset, I would prefer that we have somebody from the police department that is equipped and ready to handle somebody who's disruptive, because they certainly know that it wouldn't be up to us as a board, or the city, or, or a resident to do so.
So, but do we want to pay one of our officers to be in here for meetings just in case?
Not all meetings, but if it's going to be, if it's a meeting that we expect a large amount of people to come, or a particularly difficult situation where there's going to be some very angry constituents, I would say yes. It is well worth the investment, rather than having somebody decide they want to start a fistfight in the hall.
So, what we've done in the past at the old PD City Hall, I can remember, is when there was a time we did have more issues with these types of things, we would just speak to the chief if he thought something was going to be on the agenda, and he would make sure one of the officers was aware, and was kind of hanging out around the area should they be needed, instead of necessar, they're, they're already there, right? They're already working.
Not sitting in there.
Not sitting in there, but aware that they might have to run upstairs, or in this case, down the hall.
Next door, yeah.
So, that's always possible too, instead of paying somebody's extra to sit in here.
Right, to sit here, yeah.
So, from that perspective, I would suggest then, staffing, when we have an agenda that we think there may be a contentious issue, that we inform the police department so that the on shift officer in charge can accommodate that request.
Yeah, because I'm just thinking, I mean, you've got somebody who's a very...
Because the officer in charge for that shift will know what people he has working and who he could assign to that task.
Not everybody decides when they're asked politely to leave, because they've disturbed the peace, generally do, so...
Yeah, no, they usually don't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on this agenda item? Excuse me. Okay, hearing none. Item number eight, I'll accept the motion to go into closed session to discuss section 2C1, personnel, and section 2C5, purchase or lease of real estate.
Make a motion to go into closed session, to discuss section 2C1, personnel, and section 2C5, purchase or lease of real estate.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Harlan, second by Concross. How much questions? Lou, please call the roll.
Lancaster?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Haderlin?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Lobley?
Yes.
Concross?
Yes.
Motion passes.
At this time, we will go into closed session and pause our broadcast on the purchase or lease of real estate. What is your pleasure?
We wanted to motion to send it to staff, right?
I don't think it was a motion, but we would send, we'd direct, direct, so we'd direct staff to, to proceed with further steps in investigation of the, do I say the...
Just...
Of the, of the...
Project Bell.
Of Project, Project Bell?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments or questions on that? Hearing none, I...
Motion to adjourn.
Accept the motion adjourned. Motion by Schultz, second by Perkins. All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Thank you.
What are we doing, our legs start to fumble so fast?
Yeah.
Standing in the dust.
Yeah.
Yeah.